You got it, or do you want me to do the next line? Okay. This evening we'll be swearing in new council members Jeff Heima and Jerome Christensen. And city clerk Monica and I'll be taking care of that. And George.
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, your name?
Jerome Heima.
Do solemnly swear.
Sowlling swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
The Constitution of the state of Minnesota.
And to discharge faithfully.
And to discharge faithfully.
The duties of a member.
The duties of a member.
Of the city council.
Of the city council.
Of the city of Winona, Minnesota.
Of the city of Winona, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
During my continuance in office.
Continuance in office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations. I mean, congratulations.
Well, you should actually, you're very sweet there. It'd better have been traded by seven. I've never asked that.
Evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council. This evening I have a comment regarding the conclusion of the evaluation of the performance of Chad Ubel, city manager. On December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, the city council had held a closed meeting to evaluate the performance of Chad A. Ubel as acting city manager. In accordance with the governing law at the city council meeting, which is the next open city council meeting following the December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two closed session, the city is required to summarize the conclusions of the evaluation of the performance of Mr. Ubel reached by the city council at the December nineteenth closed meeting. Mr. Ubel did not request that such meeting be open to the public. As a result, the evaluation of Mr. Ubel's performance took place in a closed meeting as provided by the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. As mayor of the city of Winona, I will now provide a summary of the conclusions reached by the city council from the December fifth closed meeting regarding the performance evaluation of Chad Ubel. Mr. Ubel has met expectations as acting city manager. Mr. Ubel continues to work to gain experience and knowledge of the community and city operations. Mr. Ubel works well with other city employees, the public and businesses. And the city council appreciates Mr. Ubel's service to the city and looks forward to continuing its employment relationship with Mr. Ubel for the betterment of the Winona community. Secondly, tonight I'd just like to welcome our new council members. This is my first time with new council members. I was gonna try and think of something poignant to say in regards to what I had learned over the last two years, but I trust in both of you that you will do your best for the community here in the next four years, and I look forward to serving with you both. So thank you and congratulations. Lastly, good luck. So. With that, we'll move to city manager Chad Ubel's comments.
Mayor and council, just one comment. Welcome Jerome and Jeff. I think I've told you this privately, but ask as many questions that you need to ask to make an informed decision. That's what staff is here for. So again, don't hesitate to ask as many questions as you feel fit or need, and we'll try our best to provide those answers for you. So, good luck. Those are all my comments tonight.
For the remainder of this meeting, residents are only allowed to speak if they have a request before the council, and I have recognized you to speak.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Young. Heima. Christensen.
Here.
Iden. Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests and communications, item three point one is the on-sale liquor licenses for Two Brothers Sports Bar and Grill.
Move approval of licenses.
License.
I'll second.
All right, here we go. Take the motion from George. And a second from Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And passes.
Item three point two is a temporary wine and malt liquor license for the Minnesota Marine Art Museum.
Move approval of the license.
I'll second.
We have a motion from Steve, a second from Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item three point three is a temporary wine and malt liquor license for the Winona Arts Center.
Move approval of the licenses.
I'll second.
We'll take the motion from Pam, second from Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Under new business, the selection of the council president pro tem.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion or suggest George Borzakowski.
Second.
Dominique him.
We have a motion from Aaron, second from Steve. Any discussion? I will mention that George was previous council president. And during Michelle Alexander's term after she had run for mayor, he had suggested that she run as council president or be council president. And I think it's fitting that we bring George back as council president again. Obviously, council president serves in my place in my absence, so. George, I'm gonna be calling you quite a bit, having you fill in for me. All right? Thanks.
I'll be ready. Thank you.
Yes, sir, you will. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
In one vote. Item five point two is the renewal of the twenty twenty-three workers' comp and accident plan for city volunteers.
We move approval of the workman's comp plan.
I'll second that.
Motion from George, second from Aaron. We do have Dustin Leno from the Winona Agency available.
Mayor and council, this is our workers' comp renewal. Staff is suggesting to renew using the retrospective rates premium option, which we've used in the past. We do have a risk management fund that we have dollars set aside in the event that we would need to pay in additional money for the insurance. Last year we did have a refund for the retro rate adjustment of eighty-eight thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars.
Steve? Can I ask what our balance is in that contingency fund if we needed to contribute premium?
There is, mayor and council, there is currently one point eight million set aside in the risk management fund.
George, that's set aside in workers' comp? Or?
That, mayor and council, those dollars are set aside for for the purpose of insurance.
Okay.
Not specifically for work comp, but it is for, for insurance.
Okay. Thank you. Steve?
Dustin, if you can hear me, this is Steve Young. If, if, if I could maybe get your comments. Would you characterize our results? We've used this retro premium rating plan for a number of years, and maybe you can tell me how, how long, if you know. But would you say it's fair to characterize our, our, our performance as good? This, is this, this, has this been a good deal for, for the, the city of Winona? If you could add some comments to that effect, that'd be great. Thanks.
Yeah, most definitely. Good, good evening, mayor and council. This is Dustin Leno from Winona Agency. Steve, that's a great question. I, you know, historically, the city's been doing this plan for several decades now, and although some years have been up, some years have been down. Historically, this has been a good deal for the city if you want to categorize it that way. You know, with that said, past performances are no indication of future results, but just seeing where the city is trending, we've been, we watch those, look at those results every single year as the claims come in, and this is gonna be another good year, it looks like, for the plan, and and, and historically, this has performed well for, for the city.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Dustin. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point three is the community garden grant opportunity.
Before we take any motion, I will ask John Howard, our sustainability coordinator, to give us a short presentation. Thank you, Steve. Okay. Sounds good.
Good evening, mayor and council. I do have some new information that I think is important to consider and, and change the, kind of, some staff perspective on applying for a community grant option. Today we learned that Hiawatha Valley Mental Health is also pursuing a community garden, very similar to what we have at the East Rec Garden in terms of size and scale. And would also be pursuing the same funding stream, this same grant opportunity. So given, given that we're pursuing very similar objectives, kind of the staff opinion is to essentially support the Hiawatha Valley project, give our, our experience with our experience on running a community garden and to help them develop their garden. And so not to submit a grant application for this, this grant opportunity, or this, this grant year. We would still want to continue planning a west side garden and developing those options, including talking with the community about where a garden should go and how it should look. And in consulting with our task force. Some of the ideas that were recommended as well is to, we have a somewhat transportable planters that could be put in the West Lake area to accommodate some use there. These are not probably the same size as we have at the East Rec Garden, but could be used to supplement and sort of a micro way, a garden on the west side to meet the, the need there. The task force report definitely showed a strong relationship with, with location and use, so that we do still want to consider the, the west side users and, and meet some of that, that need that is there. So the, if council concurs, what we would recommend is instead of a motion to proceed with the grant opportunity is to pass a motion to support the Hiawatha Valley proposal. And, and, and they, they would have put in the application for their, their, their garden. We should be open to the public and serve a very similar purpose that we would, that we'd be serving on the west side, but just in a different, different location. And I'd be happy to address any questions or, or comments.
We'll start with Steve. He's been eyeballing me, and we'll go to Pam.
Move that council support the, the Hiawatha Valley grant proposal related to a community garden opportunity.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion from Steve, second from George. Discussion, Pam?
Yes, yes. I have talked to several of you today about this, about the community garden plan, and no one mentioned that there was a, a move to change the whole situation over to Hiawatha Valley. I'm kind of surprised at this, and I wonder if it has come back, why it has come up so suddenly. I'm not really in favor of it until I know more about this. The, the plan has, the plan that we've got by the, by the West Lake has been vetted and looked at by the Community Garden Task Force, which has worked very hard on this plan. And I think it's a fine one, so I see no reason to suddenly bow out. Thank you.
Do you want to comment, Chad, or?
I just have one question. When you're pursuing a grant like this, is it possible that both the city and Hiawatha Valley could, could both receive that grant? I, I'm not, I'm thinking to myself, why do we want to try and get out of the running for that if it's possible for both entities to receive the, to receive a grant? Anytime the city can get grant money, I'm for it.
So mayor and council, I, to address both concerns. One, Eric Seaver is director of the Hiawatha Valley Mental Health, had contacted me last week, right around the time the agenda was going out, and asked for a letter of support. So it, it is a, in a sense, a new revelation to us as well that they were applying for the exact same grant. When staff discussed it today, there was concern that are we competing against each other? And you could say we both win, or do we both lose? And would there be a question from the Department of Agriculture, why? Why is Winona not doing this in a partnership? Why are there two requests? And so we came back tonight saying we, we're gonna recommend supporting Hiawatha and then look at this grant opportunity again next year for the West Lake. Again, if it's really council decision, then to pursue that action.
Jeff?
A couple of questions. The, the first one, if, if we're in support of this, is there anything that would preclude the city going, coming back next year during their grant proposal and doing a second one?
Mayor and council, I, I believe we could easily apply next year as well. The, I mean, the only, the only issue is it is really about a year and a half, the time lag between when you apply and when you're actually would start construction, just on, just on when the grant funds are awarded, but we could, yeah, so that would be our, our hope is to have a west side garden ready so that if there is still need and desire next year, we would have a grant application that we could submit and then have for a west side location.
I think, one other comment. I, I'm in support in general of, of partnerships within the community so that it's not viewed that the city is the, the, the be-all and end-all of all things in development. I think one of our roles is we can be a catalyst, you know, for other organizations within the city, and I think this type of situation with Hiawatha Valley and partnering with them fits that bill very well. So, thank you.
Jerome?
How much do we know about the Hiawatha, Hiawatha's grant application? How does it compare with the, what, what we've prepared for, by the city? And would they be possibly complimentary rather than simply competitive?
Mayor and council, the, unfortunately, we didn't really get the full details of the Hiawatha Valley garden till late this afternoon. So we, we've just, we've, I've read through what they are proposing to apply for, and it reads in many ways similar to the type of garden that we would have, working to serve under, on, working as a, a source of community building, working for underserved community members. And I mean, it is, it is certainly possible that it could be done in a complimentary manner, where we have a, you know, potentially a joint application where they apply for their garden and, and essentially we apply for a garden on the west side as well. Either as individual entities or as one application, that could be a, a possibility. Certainly, we, we, what we're, I guess, afraid of is if we both apply, we could potentially preclude them from doing their garden, or we could be denied and then might have, might hurt our chances in the future of ever getting a garden for that location. But it is, I guess, it is, it is a possibility that there could be a joint application for a west side location and, and theirs as well. But kind of given the timing, we were afraid that we would, you know, potentially butt heads and, and, and lead to a less optimal outcome.
Steve?
Perhaps I missed it, but did you have, could you be more specific on location, or is that just indeterminate?
Just clarification on where we would build a garden or where Hiawatha Valley is.
Correct.
Yep, mayor and council, the, the location for Hiawatha Valley would be at behind their facility. They have quite an extensive parking area that they, they don't use. So this would be, this is the, the former urgent care building on Sarnia Street. I think it's three twenty Sarnia Street. It would be basically a block behind, behind Sarnia. So it would be an east side location, that, that is, it's one disadvantage compared to having a west side location being relatively, being somewhere closer to our existing garden than where we would propose one.
George? If we apply for this grant and we're awarded it, how long would it be before we received any money for this?
The likely earliest point would be late March of, of twenty twenty-three. And so based on my calculation, that would probably preclude us from getting everything built for planting this year, unless everything aligned perfectly. So most likely we would be building or, or rather opening the garden for spring of twenty twenty-four. And that's, that's the same timeline that Hiawatha Valley is, is pursuing.
Would there be a big benefit if we applied for this grant together?
It, it may be easier to submit one application than to come back in a future year for another, with another application. But, you know, there is the possibility we couldn't quite fund both projects with this, this grant. The, the maximum grant is fifty thousand dollars. Our estimate is about thirty-six thousand for our garden. Maybe a little less on a smaller scale. I think Hiawatha Valley would definitely need at least that balance to fund their garden. But I mean, it, we, we certainly, we could explore a joint application. I mean, we, they, they seem to have a very strong application. They had some strong partnerships. And we're gonna be doing some very extensive community planning, so they had a, a good proposal, and we didn't want to interfere with that, so that's why we had our recommendation, but we could continue to explore a, a partnership if that's the will of the council.
Jeff?
John, is it my understanding that the, the grant money is for kind of the initial development of the community gardens, that there really isn't any money for ongoing maintenance or care thereof?
The, the, the grant itself could apply to maintenance and, and management. The way we have structured their, the request has been definitely loaded towards the construction and the materials there with the hope that the community members and gardeners would maintain the garden and be very active in that, that maintenance. But it could be, we could allocate dollars towards that as part of this, this grant.
But the, the grant money has no, once you receive the grant, there is no ongoing monies for maintenance or something. I'm thinking five years, ten years down the road.
Yes, the, the grant, I think, is active through June of twenty twenty-six, so there would be a few years where we could, we could budget in and maintenance, but you know, long-term, it is, it would be the responsibility of, of the city or Hiawatha Valley to, to maintain that garden beyond that, beyond that date.
Okay. Thank you.
John, the questions I have are in a little different lane here. Talk about, let's say we let Hiawatha do this and move forward with the grant application, and, and even then, it's not guaranteed that they're gonna receive that grant, so. What are the opportunities that we have with the temporary planters? And would we still be looking at a West Lake location or someplace else? What would our options be? And I guess also give us a, a scale of what it would look like with those temporary planters, and maybe just a brief description as to what the temporary planters are.
Mayor and council, I might defer to Patrick if you might have a little bit more information on what those planters exactly look like and how they work. There's approximately fifteen of these prefabricated garden structures. They're approximately seven feet long, two and a half to three feet wide. They're made out of poly, polymer type of material. They collect the water and then the water sits down in a basin. But they're, they're not necessarily temporary. They could be used long-term, but I would consider them more of a mobile piece. So right now we have them in storage, just waiting on a home for these.
Have we used those before anywhere?
We have not.
Okay, so they're just in storage. We haven't had them out yet.
Correct.
John, if what? How, I, I'm sorry, you said seven feet by what, two and a half feet, and we had about seventeen of those? What is, I don't have my, I have my calculator here, but would that be approximately a third of what we were proposing? A quarter, a half, just off the top of your head? Just rough?
I would say probably in a, maybe a little under half. So our typical plot is four by twelve, so that'd be forty-eight square feet. This would be two and a half times seven would be approximately seventeen and a half, eighteen square feet, I think.
Okay.
So, give or take forty percent the same, forty percent size?
What would cost factor be to get this temporary solution out there?
Mayor and council, just staff time. We'd load them up, piece them together.
We'd still have to find water source.
Yeah, right, yes. For the, for the structures themselves, I mean, they're basically just need to get unpacked.
Just pump them down and then?
Still need a water source.
Yeah, drop in the liner and then the soil and whatever aggregate we use on the bottom of those, essentially, right?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Okay, so fairly low cost to get these out and up and running. And that, that's something we could do this year?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just ready to go.
Jeff?
Is, is my understanding that in some of the initial conversations, there's the, the boxes for the garden and then, excuse me, a trellis that goes around it? And so when you're talking about these temporary structures, are you also talking about building a trellis around it?
I believe our, our emphasis would really be just getting them out there. Wouldn't have a fence, given the temporary, potentially the temporary nature, and if they go over well, maybe that would be indication that this would be a good site for a, a permanent garden, and in that case, we probably would want to go with a fence. The, the trellis fence is proposed simply because it looks a little bit nicer and, and is, is also a kind of an educational piece for growing different types of, of, of food. But I think our, I think at this point, we would probably just put those planters out there for kind of trial and not have a fence, but that's, again, that could be, we could, that's, well, the council can decide if, how that exactly looks.
But I think, lastly on it, I mean, I think we need to be careful as to locations. Because I, I know there's been some discussions about perhaps areas within the park areas along West Lake. And I'm, and while I'm for community gardens, I also want to be very mindful of sightlines and property owners and, and get buy-in from the specific neighborhood that we're considering placing them. So I, it, I think before we put anything anywhere, we, we need to do due diligence in making sure we're contacting the homeowners and what have you within the area so that we've got some buy-in.
Chad?
Mayor and council, the other comment I would just add to both John and Patrick is with the number that we have, we could test different locations, and in my mind, you know, there certainly was some discussion about Madison School. And I think of that location as well. I know that we don't always want to talk about this, but that has a fence line. We could secure these planters to that fence. If you put out ten planters in West Lake, good location for a test, we would have to have some kind of system to cable tie these together so that they don't unfortunately walk off or end up in the lake. They're not, you know, they're not that large that they couldn't walk off. But also, this could be an opportunity for us to test multiple locations. You know, whatever, half and half or eight and eight at each, at each site. And certainly Madison has been discussed before about having that option for garden, so just add it on to what Patrick and John are alluding to, that we could test more sites.
Pam?
Yeah.
Good to hear.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I, I believe there has been discussion about quite a few different sites around the west side of town for this, for this project. So I would, I would definitely like to see us go ahead with the Winona's community garden. I mean, think especially in deference to all the work that's gone into this project by the, the task force. Again, I'm kind of surprised that it's been, that it, that it's on the, that it's on the agenda this way, when actually we don't really intend to. when actually we don't really intend to apply for the grant. That seems a little abrupt. Has these, has the task force been notified of this or have they been involved in this decision?
The number of the task force, about half the task force was consulted today or we were heard, heard back from today about discussing, discussion that there was developments about the Hiawatha Valley garden. And we actually have a member of the task force here who, I don't know if they are so inclined to speak, but the 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 definite opinion was that we we don't want to forget about the the west side and the the definitely heard from the survey results that there is interest in having having a geographic distribution and the importance of having something nearby for for the use. And that's and that's where that these portable beds were proposed. I don't know the 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 opinion of some of the members, but the ones that I did speak with, you know, like the idea of having a garden at Hiawatha Valley. There may be some hesitancy about, you know, having put in a lot of work and having a good proposal and not proceeding with it. But it it's it's one of those where, you know, it it it, even if we don't get the west side garden, if if Hiawatha is built, that's still a step in the right direction in terms of increasing capacity and and viability of gardens.
Aaron.
Mayor, after listening to everything, it really sounds to me as if, I concur with John and that group. I think we pull our support of getting a grant, put our support behind Hiawatha to do it, kind of gives them the logistics and the manpower and stuff. It sounds to me as if we have the facilities or the product that we can put temporary gardens someplace in the west end. We have those blinders up to seventeen, I think you said, Mayor. And if it's just staff time and and I would think ideally volunteers that plan on using them, maybe we can look at doing that this year yet with the products we already have. Push our support towards HVL or and and let Hiawatha deal with that. That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor or Mr. Oubel, do, should I amend the motion to to outline that we'll have city temporary containers put out or can we assume that that will happen for two thousand and twenty-three?
Mayor and Council, I don't think you need to necessarily amend your motion because, again, we, staff understands the discussion that's happened and that you can trust that we will get the portable units out. Again, if we've been running into any issues with the distribution, we certainly would notify council. But our our plan, you know, based on the discussion tonight, and that's also some of the thought process in supporting Hiawatha would be is that we would make sure that those portables are out this for this planting season.
Jeff.
And just, you know, one one addition to Councilman Rapinski's ideas, which I support. It would seem then you you would use the temporaries as kind of a a trial run and then you can come back and redo this grant the next round. So that would, you know, you'd, so you'd start with Hiawatha Valley and the temporary ones, see how that worked and then come back with a full grant proposal the next round when you wouldn't be in competition. That's right.
A question. Yeah, a question. Are we asking the task force now to go back and look at, look at the sites again and choose choose a good site for the temporary portable gardens? Is that, is that their job or are staff going to do that? I know that there's been some discussion about the about the wetland at Lake Park and how that would affect the gardener, gardeners and gardens. So there may very well be a better site.
My my recommendation would probably be to engage the task force in continued continuing citing for west side location. And that would include having some community meetings with the the West Lake neighborhood and and outline just kind of what what's been proposed in the report and talk about these potential planters. And and also consider if if the Madison School site would be would be a, you know, theoretically, we could put put them in both locations, a few in each location to give a to give a trial for for those areas. But yes, I would definitely say work with the, I would, I would hope to work with the task force if they're if they're so inclined to help with with citing and design.
Well, I will, I will vote for this if we can be assured that we are, that the city is going to go ahead with these temporary gardens this this year, even without the grant money. We're going to go ahead and do that on the west side somewhere. Yeah.
Chad, you had something?
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to follow up with Pam's comment that you said something that was important midway through for staff is that we we talk a lot about the west location. Again, it's a great location for a future community garden. But as we're talking, I can think to myself, okay, these are portable units. Do we have good access? Is it accessible? If you have limited mobility, can you get to these? We have to take all those things into account before we land on a location. But you've said it correctly. You know, staff will focus on west locations for these portables. To keep in mind, again, there are some logistic things that we have to keep in mind, like accessibility to these garden plots when deciding where to place them.
All right.
Jerome. Just one more question about the Hiawatha plan. Would they be coming online the, not this summer, but the following summer?
Yeah, they would, they would open in spring of two thousand and twenty-four.
So this, by putting out the temporary plans, we'd have additional garden spots available for the public this summer, which we wouldn't if we went ahead with the plan that was included in the agenda tonight.
Correct, I mean, we certainly could apply, put, even if we were to apply for this grant, put out those temporary planters as as sort of a a test run. But, yep, as proposed, we would, we do not have those temporary planters.
And then if we, the next grant cycle would put the city's gardens out two years out from from now?
Bring it twenty-five then.
Bring it, yeah.
We we certainly could put together a proposal. And this this grant opportunity has been around for, I think this is his fourth year. So it's it's, I, I guess I'm optimistic that it will be here again next year, but certainly can't can guarantee that.
So the ultimately, we could end up with all, oh, the garden spots in two years.
Great.
That's, that's a good way to look at it. George. I am for this project. The success, the success of the one down by the east end rec center has proven that, you know, these are successful projects. I like what's offered for us to apply for the grant. Seems like council wants to go in partnership with Hiawatha Valley Mental Health. I guess I'll be okay with that. I'm just kind of touring, which way do I want to go here? And if we're going to get the same results with Hiawatha Valley as we would on our own, is that safe to say they want to do so many? Then will there be funding left in for us to go and expand a little more? Because as we heard in the, in the pre-council, you know, people do want a location up west by the lake. And I think as as a city, I think we need to look to see that, you know, that that does happen. But I am in support of this. And if council wants to choose to go with Hiawatha Valley Mental Health, okay, fine. But like you say, if they are awarded this, are any of those funds going to be available for us to work on our own? Or we'd be working with them through every step, which I don't have a problem with.
The, excuse me, the, the way I think the the application would be is Hiawatha Valley would put together funds for their for their their unit. And and really, we would, the city would assist with, you know, providing some of our expertise as to what works in a garden. How can you structure this, maybe adding in some programming? So doing things of without, with minimal to no cost to the city. But their their grant as proposed, as they would write it up, wouldn't, wouldn't provide funding for the city. We, I mean, there's, we haven't discussed this very thoroughly with Hiawatha Valley, but theoretically, we could combine applications and and maybe pare down what they're looking to do and what we're looking to do and have one application for for both of our gardens in one one application. That would be, that would be allowable under the grant. But theoretically, if they apply as they were planning to, they could have a bigger garden this year. And then we apply next year, we could have a larger garden based on what the funding, what the maximum funding would 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 allow. So we could essentially, if we apply this year, it's a fifty thousand dollar max. If they apply this year, we apply next year, we can get more than fifty thousand dollars, assuming we both get get funded.
Okay, so would we be funding, would we be applying for this grant together then? Or is that too early to ask?
And as as it is now, they would be applying and we would just be providing a letter of support. So I, yeah, it's it's my understanding of what the council's been discussing is that we would then come back next year with an application for a city garden. And 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 it'd be a separate, basically like we have here now, but just for the the city's, city's purposes.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna throw in my two cents on the deal here. I'm a west end resident. I was fully in support of seeing something on the west end. I didn't really care what the location was as long it was, as it was closer to my house. Plain and simple. And there's a lot of people on the west end who have been asking for something like this. And I'll, I'll talk about Eileen a little bit here. She was a big proponent of having something over on the west end. It, yeah, it stinks. I found out about this just before the meeting tonight. And I was, you know, I had discussions today, I had constituents call. I had talked to staff about this. I'd been working with the task force. I talked to task force members today in regards to the west end location at the lake. It stinks. But it's also good. And that's what, how we, I think we should probably look at this. We're still getting an extra garden for the community. Location isn't ideal, but what that does is that pulls our seventeen store, uh, temporary units out of storage, gets them out with the promise from staff that we're getting it on the west end. We can test and also we can make it better than what it was originally because we'll have more information based on usage here, usage there. How much does it cost for water source here? Does Madison just take off, you know, like all of a sudden is that location great? And a lot of people are really talking about it? And then we just scrap the the West Lake location altogether? Who knows? But it gives, I look at it as an opportunity for us to do a little bit more research, let John, staff, the task force kind of come back with some more information for us, give it a year. And then we hit the grant again. And ultimately, it'll, the community will be better for it. So, yeah, it stinks, but I think it's a good opportunity. So that's the way I'm trying to look at it. Aaron.
Mayor, I concur. Can we, I call the vote.
Absolutely. We've been talking about it a long time.
What is our motion now?
Yeah. Let's have Monica reread it for us. If you would, please. Yes.
Mayor and Council, the motion by Councilmember Young was to support the grant application from Hiawatha Valley.
And we had a second from?
Borzakowski.
Yep. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, John. Appreciate it.
Item five point four is the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-five base pay schedules.
To adopt the attached base pay schedules.
I'll second that.
Motion from Steve, second from Aaron. Any discussion?
George.
The manager wanna, or whoever, Deb, wanna speak on this?
Well, Mayor and Council, I think, as you're well aware, the goal, as we headed into our union negotiations this year, was an emphasis on attracting and retaining quality, skilled, dedicated workforce for the city of Winona. And we do that through, work through what's called our base pay structure. So we have an existing base pay structure. It was implemented one, one of two thousand and sixteen. So it's seven years that we've used that, what we call our current base pay structure. With the idea of attracting and retaining our employee group, which many of you are well aware of specifically what's happening within our police force. The goal was to create a new base pay structure for all the employees. So the concept here is that all employees would be on this new, what we call two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-five base pay structure. And really, I think it's important to note that within your packet, I believe it's page eighteen of the one twenty-four, we have, we have what we call notes. And I think those are important just to go over really quick. The base pay structure states that all step increases will be awarded based on employee anniversary date and position conditional upon satisfactory performance. Again, as I alluded, what does that mean? This base pay structure and where people are slotted in for their base wage is across the board uniform. So again, all step increases are awarded based on employee anniversary date. The second note is that if the employee does not achieve satisfactory performance, then the employee's performance will be reviewed again within sixty calendar days of such review. Again, employees need to be in a satisfactory performance evaluation across the board, all the employees. So the base pay structure covers those two points. The third is an important one as it relates to personnel and how the charter is written for specifically the role of the city manager. Employees starting in a position may be placed on any step at the discretion of the city manager. That's the personnel side of of my position. So we hire a new employee for, we'll say, the water department. Then it's my discretion of where they are placed in the base pay structure for a grade and a step. The fourth note that is kind of a general concept within the base pay structure is that employees promoted to a position that is in a higher pay grade will be placed on a step that is at, is at least equivalent to, but not less than their base wage before they were promoted. What does that mean in in general terms? We want there to be incentive and also some good feelings when you get promoted. One of those good feelings is that, well, I get to a higher grade or a higher base pay. And so there's motivation also then from the retention side of the employee group to say, we're not going to promote you and then pay you less. And so those are the kind of the four conditional notes along with the items that you see within the council action to establish this new base pay schedule.
Thank you, Chad. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point five is the law enforcement labor services local two sixty-one, two thousand and twenty-three through twenty-five agreement for the Winona Police Department sergeants.
I would move to approve the attached resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point six is the law enforcement labor services local seventy-five, two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-five agreement for the Winona Police Department officers.
I move that we move that we adopt the proposed labor agreement. I'll second.
We have a motion from Steve, second from George. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Item five point seven is the City of Winona Professional Employees Association, two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-five bargaining agreement.
Move that we adopt the attached proposed labor agreement. Second.
We have a motion from Steve, second from Aaron. Any discussion? Jeff.
Just a a point of congratulations to the folks involved in the negotiations. Having done this type of stuff for twenty years, it doesn't always go this smoothly. And that's, uh, it it's, it is, it has to be attributed to someone on both sides coming together for the betterment of the city. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments?
George.
Can we get better acronyms than KALP? It's been there for years. They've been, can we come up with something different?
I believe it's pronounced cow pie.
Oh, cow pie, okay.
Joking, joking. Okay, any other comments, questions, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
We'll start with council president Borzakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to the two new members, Jerome and jeez, I forgot his first name already. I can't, I can't see him, so I gotta watch on the screen here, Jerome and Jeff. Welcome. Welcome, and you'll be a good addition. I hope you enjoy it as much as I have. So also, it's time for my New Year's resolutions, as I try to bring up every year. First of all, I hope that we can remove all drug dealers out of residential neighborhoods. That we have people clean up their yards, clean up their homes, clean up their alleys, and just clean up their sites. You yourself would be happier if you have all that clutter and junk cleared up. So thank you with that. And then also, again, like I said, I've taken the oath of office again tonight and just thinking back at all the predecessors before me that were fourth ward council reps and the rest of the council, how many, many years ago they've built a foundation. And councils of the past and this council now, we now build off of that foundation again and continue building it for future councils as we move forward. With that, thank you and have a happy, prosperous 2023.
Thank you, George. Councilmember item?
Yes, well, I would I too would like to welcome our two new council people, Jerome Christensen and Jeff Heima. I really look forward to working with you. We have a lot of good work to do this year, and we'll do it for the good of the city.
Very good. Thanks, Pam. Councilmember Young?
Yes, thank you. And a welcome to both of you as well. Look forward to to working with with you both and the rest of my council friends as well. I was pleased to receive in the mail my latest subscription to the Minnesota Conservation Volunteer and and a cool picture of a of an ice wall on on the front cover and on the inside of this Minnesota DNR magazine that you can easily subscribe to. Winona's Own is featured with Winona local Winona photographs, many names of of people that we know featuring our own ice climbing wall. So we've been recognized and you can you can Google it. You can find there's no paywall, so you can easily find that article online if you like. And I do recommend the magazine. It's a great, great little magazine. So thanks.
Thank you, Steve. Councilmember Rapinski?
Welcome to our new members. I know you guys will do the best you can to represent your fellow citizens, and I appreciate you stepping up to get on city council. Just want to remind the citizens of Winona, it's been brought to attention about snowbanks and stuff. And when you're snow blowing your snow, keep in mind when those boulevards build up on the corners, if you're on the corner lot, I know you have to move a lot of snow quite often, but if we can keep those boulevard heights a little bit lower, so the average person driving through that intersection does not or is not inhibited from their sightlines from high snow, just keep that in mind. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Aaron. Councilmember Christensen?
First, I'd like to thank everybody for a warm welcome. Looking forward to lots of good times with you guys. I spent a lot of hours at the press table over there, you know, over the past thirty-some years, and I like the view from here much better. So thank you to everyone who made it possible for me to be sitting here and to my granddaughters Leah and Lexi who are watching the this over the internet. It's time to go to bed now. Thank you.
Thanks, Jerome. Councilmember Heima?
I thank you all for the for the warm welcome. I want to thank Eileen for her help in in the transition to this role and and thank her for all the service that she she had over the last four years representing Ward Two. A special thank you to the the staff here. We have begun the process of curing my ignorance. It'll it'll go on for more than the four years I'm going to serve here, but I appreciate the warm welcome and all the help in in cluing me into what's going on. And then lastly, one one thing of note that I did want to ask about is that there currently across the street from my home in the outfield of the baseball diamond, there is a bulldozer. And so I had a question from my neighbor who was a seven-year-old girl, and she was thinking that perhaps an ice rink was going in there. And I told her, I said, I don't know. I was hoping for a swimming pool. But I I was hoping that we could get an idea of what the kind of the scope of the work going on out there is, the duration, and what the final outcome will be.
So Mayor and Council, kind of a prepared statement here because I asked staff to help me out with what is happening at the Dakota Street location. There is a pile of dirt that was recently placed along the first baseline of the Dakota Field. We we do this. It's not a new new concept. It's actually really a cost-saving strategy that allows the city to collect black black dirt from other projects for little to no cost in store for future use. The mound in the Dakota Street field, we used this spring as infield infill for the baseball softball field. The outfield's become unusable the last couple of years due to high moisture content. The newly placed soil mound will be feathered from the infield to the outfield, building up more of a kind of a stable and dry environment for that outfield. The soil that we've collected is part of an engineering project that was dredged from the stormwater collection ponds at Woodlawn Cemetery. And again, as I mentioned, storing this dirt is nothing new to the city. The strategy has been been used multiple times throughout the years. In the parks, piles can be seen between Baminic Fields five and six, next to the play structure between Fields four and five and on the disc golf course across from Lakeview Drive. And the last time we stored this type of product, it was used for the renovation project of Baminic Fields three and four. So you may see some activity dependent upon weather. You may see that bulldozer working. It's really just forming that dirt. I think after the discussion tonight, it's pretty obvious to state that we're not building community gardens in that space. It's for the outfield infill. And again, again, placement of those gardens and those portable gardens. If there's activity in that space, we obviously won't place them in there because of that work. So that's also something I wanted to note tonight as well. So should be wrapped up by end of summer, maybe at the latest, again, weather dependent, but you'll see some activities starting there in the spring at the.
That that'd be fantastic because there's about a foot drop off from the infield to the outfield, and it's always disturbing when there's ducks in the outfield. So it's great to cure those problems. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Jeff.
Moving on to the consent agenda, there are five items. The approval of the minutes from December nineteenth, the final adoption of three ordinances, and one claim against the city.
Move to approve the consent agenda. I'll second that.
Motion from Steve, second from Aaron. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Being seven twenty-seven, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion from Council President Borzakowski, second from Steve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.